Okay. I show six ten, so we will go ahead and call our first public hearing to order. Uh, this public hearing is for pop, public comments regarding the proposed taxes for the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. So we'll open that up now if there are any comments.
I haven't heard anything. It's probably nobody contacted me about it.
I have received no comments either. Okay. I am assuming with that, we have no additional comments. Uh, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries and we are adjourned for the public hearing. And we will move on to call the public hearing to order for the calendar. Um, and at this time, we'll take public comments regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty six calendar. Any comments received from anybody on that? I've received no calls, emails, contact. Any comments from the public? Okay, if there are no comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and we are adjourned from the public hearing. We will move on and call tonight's regular board meeting to order. Um, are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda?
Nope.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
ESAC County Schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society. All right, sorry, let me pull my agenda back up here. We will now take uh, public input on non-agenda items. Okay, if there's nothing there, we will move on to the Board Secretary HR report.
We've got a couple things this month. Um, our fund balances are kind of just continuing to carry the trend that they have been lost few months. Um, the second uh, page in the board packet is a year-to-date um, expense kind of summary that I worked on putting together. Um, so we've got year-to-date expenses by funds there, and then you get to the end and there's a total. Um, then there's an estimated full-year expense, and that's just kind of a high-level estimate on my part. Um, I can do a better job of digging into that and get better ideas. And then that's compared to the budget for the full year. Um, and you see we're quite a bit less than the budget, but that's just because the way John always did the budget, I did it too, is to put it at the maximum, so that way we don't have to worry about coming back and amending the budget and getting approval for that. Um, had a recent meeting and that was, a question that they asked was how many of you do a detail to the dollar budget versus just putting in the max? And it was about fifty-fifty, and I suppose it's bigger schools will go down, get into, really get into the weeds, and smaller schools will just kind of go for the max there. And then the little table that's below that, um, just shows year-to-date versus different years. Um, so you can see the big difference there is activity maybe is got more this year, and I would say that's probably just because we're running the concession stand this year, so we've got that expense going through there. Um, otherwise it's pretty, pretty in line with the prior years. Exception being in twenty twenty-two, I suppose that's when the addition was getting built, so that's why people are still watching that here, so. Just kind of a new thing that I worked on and thought it might be helpful for some people to see what we're standing. Any questions on that one?
Nope, appreciate the information.
Yeah, and then the next one is a slide that I got from Justor Insurance. They are the people that did our break fix. Um, and they said we were doing pretty good at getting claims entered. Um, this usage based on loss dates is a hundred and thirty-one percent, so I assume that's kind of what they were expecting us was a hundred percent, and we're actually over utilizing at this point, so that's good to know. Um, and they also said it's good that we have a, a mix there, you know, different pieces of the pie. Says sometimes you'll have a district that'll just have one color because nobody else is putting in claims, but we've got a, a good mix of people putting in claims, so that seems to be working out for us this year. Questions on that or anything I can follow up with?
I'm just curious, the other is kind of the large portion, right? Percent?
Yes.
Is that just?
Could be some, some door controls.
Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what's the, is the detail behind that, but I do have, like, we have a list of everything that they've reimbursed us, so I can dig into that and see what is the other.
I was just curious.
More detail that I could provide to that, but yeah. I guess that's just how they categorize it.
Categorize it, okay. It's good that we're utilizing it.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions, any additional? Okay. And correspondence?
Uh, we received a letter from Cleveland Public Schools in Cleveland, Minnesota in regards to the uh, snowstorm in stranded bus. Um, that happened last, or not last week, but the week before. Uh, I was not expecting a call from the sheriff in the middle of a blizzard and we had no kids in school. Um, but uh, we were able to devise a plan and uh, Brian Wilson volunteered to, to drive out of Lakeview here and was escorted with a pal to uh, pick up those kids and bring them to Sac City, so. Um, they had a very vengeful time in Iowa. And uh, I'm glad everything worked out. Um, and they sent us a letter thanking us for the uh, the boss and the driver and helping their kids get to Sac City safely, so. Nice to get.
All right. We will move on then to administrative reports.
Sure, um, update on professional development. Monday, we held our, um, we had our learning and just started the day with some vocabulary, routine instruction led by Lisa Keys. And uh, teachers are working to implement that. It's similar to things they've done in the past, but yet we're continuing to learn as we have letters, so just some small tweaks, so. Um, we're seeing that being implemented now. Um, and also continuing, I didn't add that to um, continuous work on standards is just every time we need, so. Um, I don't put that in every time, but they continue to do that, so. Um, preschool parent night, we had our annual night and we had a really good turnout. Um, our team was there to just discuss preschool, the goal of getting kids ready and parents ready. Uh, we currently have fifty-nine students enrolled, um, so we are at max with three sections at fifty-four. So we will have to turn some kids away, so we'll work with Head Start um, to just make sure that all Sac County kids have some type of programming. Um, a couple of changes, we are going to, after looking at our schedule and Lisa Keys being also an interventionist, and really mornings being preferred by parents, instead of having two afternoon programs, we're going to do two morning programs and then one afternoon. Um, so we think that'll be a positive change. And then as a team, we met and talked about transportation and how that can be a barrier, especially for daycare providers. If so, um, we are going to transport students from daycare centers that are recognized by the district, district. Um, Mr. He Miller had us kind of define what that was, so I put that definition in there, and so we're working with those people to make sure that we're um, meeting those needs, so overall it was a good night. And yeah, a little bigger class, so it's kind of that, seems that we have that lopsided, small, big, small, big, small. Um, update on building goals, um, you can see, I, we're, we're making really good progress. And um, through trial and remitting to look at the data and to celebrate it, it's um, it's not like it's um, you know, huge, but we're just, we're slowly just making that progress, especially when you look at our student work system at risk. Um, over the last three years, we're really getting that number down, that's a goal that we have, and so we will continue to, to do that, so, or to work towards that goal, so. Good things happening and just reporting out on that. And then parent-teacher conferences went really well, we had ninety-five percent attendance, and I still have teachers reaching out. Um, so with that in mind, we could, will be closer to that ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent, actually when they actually have the conferences and update me on their, on their numbers, so. And again, they went smoothly. I couldn't get a request to sit in on any conferences again, so. Two good nights. In the middle of a snowstorm.
Thanks. Any questions for Becky? All right.
Okay, um, for the seven twelve building, I started talking about conferences and then um, I think the biggest thing for us with that is that very professional development, and we gather a lot of the input that we get from, from parents and try to like, look at what are the things that, you know, we can change or accomplish, or what are the things that we're doing well and want to continue, and um, so I've started kind of compiling that, got it from most of the teachers so far. Um, some of them had a few that had parents that said, would you like to call and go through things, do something at later date, so they're still holding on to theirs. Um, but we're really trying to get something out of that, and we're, I did not do my percentage, which I wanted to have by this, but I'll, I'm gonna look into that because I know we had really good turnout too, and and yeah, not even a snowstorm could stop the second conferences night from happening, so that was good, but. Um, and I was happy with attendance that day too, I mean, I know roads are better and everything was good by later in the day, but my parents, nobody was canceling last second. Um, some things that we're looking at here at the building for possible changes for next year, is we were looking at our credit requirements, and we're looking at different districts around us. Um, I know it was west sitting out here at forty-eight, we're not like that far away from everybody else, but there's a lot of the districts that I was asking were at fifty or fifty-two. Um, I know uh, there was one that I even just talked to, let's see, Bridgeview, they're, they're looking at making a move too, so I thought it was interesting when we got to talk, you know, they just want to make sure that. Uh, some things that kind of sprung this for us, and I, I've said this with uh, Bridgeview's principal, as a, the number of kids we had that could have graduated early, which is not, it's not a bad thing, it's a really good thing, kids are passing everything. Um, it could have been most of our senior class, and I want to at least still have that as an option, and if we improve, if we went up to even fifty-two, um, you know, you take the amount of credits you can get each semester, anytime to buy seven semesters, which would be halfway through your senior year, I mean, it would still be, if you passed everything, it would still be possible, so that still puts us in that category. And I think that kind of puts a stronger component to what our academic requirements are, and something that our leadership team is still looking into, what we exactly want to do or what, what it could look like, but something that we're kind of reviewing. Um, so again, like I said, I had talked with a lot of neighboring districts with what they have and just trying to compare what we offer with that. Um, also cellphone policy for next year, I know um, the way state law is written, we just have to have something um, in our handbook, which we already do have something, but you know, we've, again, this is something where I'm not just gonna do it on an island, I was kind of looking at what other districts were thinking. Um, and there's a few of them around us already, South Central Caboon and Newel Fonda that, that have um, done a complete day that they started this year, like no cellphones even at lunch, even at, you know, different time periods, and a lot of it had to do with not just what we're seeing in the classroom, but you know, mental health for kids. Um, I actually had a student just today, this would be perfect timing for this, tell me, she was like, well, sometimes it's just kind of that relief to get back on my phone when I get in the hallway or something else, and I was like, I mean, there's good to that, it's your, you get a small amount of downtime between classes, but if you evaluate that, it's also you kind of being like, I need it, you know, I need to get on this, and then what are you scrolling through? Social media posts that could be from, you know, even different students that might say something that you, you know, you're not going to agree with, there, there's, there's things there that kind of attack. I, I, there's some things there that aren't mentally healthy as well, and so that's one of the things that some of those districts have talked about, why they wanted to go that way. Again, this is something we're still looking at in the leadership team, and I want to bring up at a at a future board meeting. Um, some of the things that uh, we were thinking is it's either going to be nothing throughout the entire day like some of those districts, or just during lunch, like, so not even passive period, not even those other ones, because I, I think there is a, there's something to investigate with, like, how it's been working at those other districts. Um, and then another part of the bill that was recently passed is that we need to make sure that we communicate to parents, like how they would get ahold of their kids, which to me, I, you know, I think is like, what did we do for every year before, you know, people had cellphones, you could call into the office, you know, but uh, if a kid thought they had to say something at home, they could come up to any of the offices that we have down there up here and just say something to my parents. We wouldn't turn them away from doing that ever, so. Um, but that can be communicated out uh, as well. Um, that they could come to the offices or if you needed to, just call the office, we have something for your kid. Um, so another thing I wanted to highlight, so going away from things that are changes, uh, was something that we, I think we did this even last year where the Mr. McCollough's group went and uh, visited preschoolers and they, you know, they had something they had the kids do. Um, I really included this picture because my daughter was in it, so I just wanted to do that for, no, that's for me, but no, actually she uh, those are good experiences for our kids, the, I'm talking about our big kids, to go and, and interact with those younger ones. Um, and it was something my daughter talked about for about an hour for the, that night, you know, various times, so she loved seeing the, the big kids. Um, and the little PVC pipe whisper phones they made, um, but I thought that was a good experience and something good for our kids to go do. Um, and then on the back half, I had highlighted some sports and activities things that were going on currently. Um, you know, our speech results that we had there that I thought were really, really good, I know those kids were, were very happy with what they did. Um, uh, you know, we're hoping even with, that, you know, all these students will be back in it next year, and they're, they're hoping to get to all state or, you know, that they had goals along with it after they did that, but I thought it was really good with um, the scores that they got and how well they did after not having speech last year. Um, spring sports, we just were talking about before we started the meeting, uh, soccer is down in Avoca, go to Missouri Valley tomorrow, and, and they got a home meet on Thursday, so busy week for them, busy week for track starting, um, having the meet today. Uh, but it, it's good to have those things get going, even though we just had spring break and then you get right back into school and, and those activities at the same time, that's good for the kids though. And then our, the FC CLA post I have there, I know um, is not currently all of up to date, because I talked about one of our students being um, one of the top sixteen to become a state officer, well, she did, uh, and they was chosen to be state FC CLA. Uh, vice president, I can't remember what it was now, she said it just earlier today, but she was chosen to be one of the officers and um, no surprise to me, no, um, to name, but, but that was really nice, so. Any questions of what I had?
All right, I guess it's my turn.
Yes.
Uh, a few things we're gonna talk about from my report today. Um, we issued contracts on March fifteenth to date, uh, ninety-three percent of the certified contracts were, have been returned, and ninety percent of our classifieds uh, contracts have been returned. Final date to turn those in is April seventh. Saic meeting went well, uh, that occurred before spring break, uh, out of everybody who was invited. Um, ninety-four percent attendance from those who showed up, so that was appreciated and um, it's pretty good attendance from our, our parents and then students who showed up. Uh, we're gonna talk about snow days, uh, when we get to that action item for the calendar amendment. Um, and then I have slides for DeNovo and open positions, so. Uh, the DeNovo team was here at a meeting before spring break and met with myself and Tyler and Scott on March thirteenth to go over the findings of the facilities assessment. That meeting took about three hours. They have lots of information for you guys, yells, so. Um, we're looking to have uh, on, at our May meeting, which is May nineteenth, um, they are looking to present for around ninety minutes to inform the board and the public of their findings and their facilities study. Um, and I think based on what I and Tyler and Scott learned in that meeting, it'll give us a really good idea on where we should look to improve our district as far as capital projects goes. Um, we obviously, like pretty much every building, have a need to repair certain things. Um, and look at changing a few things, and they're gonna put some dollar estimates to a few of the bigger projects that they identified, and basically have a discussion with our board on, here's our findings and here's your recommendations, and then where we go from there, so. But there will be a lot of knowledge that night, a lot of uh, information passed on, so. Open positions, um, when we get down to contract offers, you're gonna see that we uh, will be offering some contracts to some high school special education teachers. Um, so they are not listed on the open positions. Uh, high school Spanish, that is still there from last year. Um, Tony has interviewed at least one candidate that took a job elsewhere. Um, high school math. Uh, we recently just got an app, so that may be a good thing. Um, Tony is gonna be reaching out to him. We're still looking for two high school science teachers, and uh, one of our recent postings was for an elementary teacher of fourth grade. So that's our certified positions as of, as of today. Uh, we are still looking for elementary associates, um, and that one is currently and next year. Uh, and food service, uh, we're looking for one, possibly two full-time cooks at this time, so, and that's also current. Um, and then coaches for middle school sports and a variety of other things. Uh, so if anyone's interested in working for ESAC, just uh, keep looking at our website and our positions posted, and we would love uh, to interview anyone who wants to be part of the team.
Okay. Any other questions on the administrative items?
Nope.
All right, then I think with no discussion items, uh, we will move on to the action um, portion of the agenda. Uh, so first up is the consent agenda. Not sure if there are any questions on any of the bills or policies or the uh, participation or purchasing agreements with the AEA.
One thing I wanted to mention, I meant to mention it during my report, but on the nutrition fund, let's see, it looks a little bit different this month for the bills. Um, Lori has been going through our soft, our software, and she identified families that no longer attend the district but still have a balance in the, their accounts, and she's been reaching out to them to see if they want to donate it, some have, or get a refund. So that's what all these lunch account reimbursements are, are families that don't go here anymore, but they still have a balance on our books, so we're just trying to get that cleaned up, yeah.
And the AEA purchasing, that's with Martin Brothers, um, for buying food, and then the uh, uh, it's natural gas for that cooperate.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, we have the amended twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
Okay, the picture of uh, well, the calendar, the amended calendar is in your board packet. Um, so just to summary what I have up on the screen right now. Uh, we've missed eight full days of school due to blizzards, roads, weather, et cetera. I've had five late starts. That has put us below the state law, the ten, uh, the ten eighty-hour state minimum. Um, and my recommendations are as follows. So administration has recommended making up four of the student days, which would be May twenty-seventh through the thirtieth, it's that, it's that week after Memorial Day, there's four days there, Tuesday through Friday. Uh, that would be making up half of the missed days, also make it, makes us compliant with the state law, and we would be forgiving four of those contact days um, that we have missed. Uh, recommending that we have two PD days at the end of the school year, those would be mandatory PD days, so there was one originally, that'd be June second and third. Um, this would be for a teacher checkout and classroom inventory. Uh, as we're going through our stuff, we, we would like a um, current inventory of district assets in case there was a catastrophic weather event where we needed to produce one. Um, so we're gonna try to get that up to date and give teachers time to do that. Uh, and then there would be three remaining contract days past June third. And uh, administration is recommending that we flex two of those days. Now, we've talked before, we have several teachers signed up to go to Minneapolis for the PLC conference, so basically going up there would count as a contract day, and then Mrs. Helber is working with Solution Tree for some PLC development at the, at the elementary, and actually is two days scheduled um, June second and third, which would then push the uh, the uh, checkout and inventory to the, the fourth and fifth. So, um, we have that planned at the elementary, and if there's a teacher who is not at the elementary participating in the Solution Tree uh, training or going up to Minneapolis, then those teachers would be responsible to create a plan with their building principal um, and come up with meaningful PD, um, attend a class, go to a workshop, something like that, that would be approved, and they would find a way to earn their contract time over that. And that gives us one remaining professional development contract day, um, and I would recommend as a sign of appreciation and for helping cover classes when needed that the board forgives that contract day um, on June sixth. Lot of information there, a lot of different models to get to this point. Uh, the one thing is if we were to approve this tonight, and Iowa is Iowa, and we have another day or two, we could still go with this model, we'd still be fine on hours, so. Um, there's a little bit of a cushion now with adding those four days in there.
While I make a motion, we approve the amended twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the amended twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, moving on to the twenty twenty-six proposed calendar. Um, seeing as we had no comments in the public hearing, we don't know if there's any further discussion at the board regarding the calendar.
The one thing I, I would just tell the board on this item, uh, you will notice that this year we had a full week of spring break. Um, next year we do not. I do believe that there is uh, staff and families who would like to maintain that if possible. The reason it's not in this year is it's not mathematically possible with our August twenty-fifth start date. So with the state law of August twenty-third, there is no possible way to have graduation on the seventeenth if we had a full week spring break. So therefore the committee uh, decided to basically have spring break from March twentieth through the twenty-fourth. It gives families the opportunity to take a four-day trip somewhere if they'd like. Um, and if there's any change to that state law, or the calendar changes and allows us to have that week spring break, we will probably consider that in the future.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed calendar. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up is the approval of the twenty twenty-six proposed taxes budget estimate.
And budget.
And budget hearing date, sorry.
No changes to what we discussed last month. Um, and then we've got the calendar there showing the, the second hearing, um, and final approval would be April twenty-first. The same day as the April board meeting.
I didn't hear anything from anybody, so I'll move to approve the fiscal year twenty-six proposed taxes budget estimate and budget hearing date as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty-six proposed taxes budget estimate budget hearing date as presented. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, last action item is the twenty twenty-four annual audit.
Do you all get a chance to read that?
No, I did not.
Yes, I did review it.
So, um, yeah, they didn't really have too many adjustments that they wanted us to make. I don't think she noted any concerns or anything, so she was pretty okay with everything that was going on, so.
Is that a big relief for you?
Yes. I did, I did, I didn't read the whole thing, but reading this, I was like, oh, I hope there's nothing in here.
You didn't know if there'd have been something
Yeah.
that we're really poking at.
Yeah, they would have told me.
The last couple pages that just covers the, what I would say the findings, if there's anything in there, and there's a few minor things, but there's usually always a few minor things that we have corrections for, so just as a high level. Um, nothing that I would say is a, a large concern from perspective. And then the financial information looks pretty straightforward. I didn't see anything terribly new as far as new disclosures or anything related to that. So it's pretty straightforward to me.
I'll make a motion to approve the audit.
I'll second that.
Okay. There's a motion in a second to approve the 2024 annual audit report. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Uh, personnel items.
All right. Uh, first part, the resignations. We had two elementary teachers submit their resignations over the last month. They are listed up on the screen. Contract offers, these would be, uh, the first one would be a new contract for, uh, Robin Cromwell as a high school special ed teacher. Um, going into next year, uh, she, uh, will be, um, the special ed teacher. After she signs her contract. And then Kate was hired as a temporary, uh, special education teacher. It's going very well. And she's considering going back and taking classes with that position, like to remain in that job for next year. So. Those are two special ed teacher contracts. Um, a few bus drivers that were not approved at our special meeting in March. Are the bus drivers listed there? And then those teacher associate contracts, those are for next year, uh, as well, um, that were not included at our special board meeting. The sharing agreements with our WEVA are listed below that. That takes us to our 21 students, uh, with those four positions. Which is. A really good thing for our budget and money coming into the districts to, uh, to share those four positions and, and receive funding for those additional students. And then pay rate for the activity bus drivers, it's currently at 1650. We're going to recommend moving that to $20. We were able to find, there's a lot of people that want to drive our routes. Okay. So we got route bus drivers. Uh, we are struggling from time to time to find people that want to drive activities. Um, just because the pay differential is, is quite a bit different. So, and then the amount of time required. So. Uh, we're recommending, uh, $20 an hour if, uh, somebody wants to drive to an activity and back with their kids.
Any questions or comments on those?
Can we approve all these?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve all personnel items.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve all of the personnel items. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So next meeting, April 21st.
Yep. That'd be the third Monday of the month. That's our typical meeting date. Um, also coincides with all the laws as far as our, our tax hearing, budget hearing. So, and so on. So. Uh, next meeting would be April 28th. First would include a budget hearing, similar to what we did tonight, uh, for the calendar and tax hearing. And it's hard to believe we're to that point where we will seek approval for the 2025 ESAC graduates. Um, and then approve the sharing agreements for tag and librarian with our WEVA. Uh, pending they approve those on the ninth.
Is there anything else? All right. If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Is that a second? One of you?
Sure.
Okay. All of those in favor? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
All right. Thank you very much.